Good afternoon, everybody. This is on December the 14th at 3:30. This is a regular meeting of the Board of Trustees in the Newbury Town Library. Hi, Alexander Burke, one of the trustees. Also in attendance are Richard Raven.
Yes, and I'm Amy.
And the constituents are quorum, absent at the moment. Our Margaret Drines, trustee, and Terry Litterst, also trustee, present here, however, importantly. He's the library director.
Erin Thompson.
And away we go to our agenda. Order has been called. Now let us look at the minutes from our last two meetings, our special meeting of November 16, our regular meeting, rather, of November 16, and our special meeting of November 30. Dick has provided us with the minutes of those meetings. Have folks examined? Do we have any objections to the meeting minutes of the 16th?
No.
And therefore, I move acceptance.
So.
And they are accepted. We have the minute meetings of the 30th. Has everybody had a chance to look at those special meeting minutes? And any objections?
No.
I move therefore acceptance, and acceptance is granted unanimously. Okay, let's move on to our director's report and thoughts and so forth. Erin.
Okay, apologies for the lazy director's report. It's a lot to cover.
Maybe long, but I frankly think it's the best you've ever done.
Oh, thank you.
Truly, truly.
All right, so, yeah, it's more learning how to chunk the information and organize it so that it makes the most sense as fast as possible at that time. Okay, so our long-range plan was filed and accepted with the MBLC on December 1st, 2022, which is awesome. So we have an official plan on file for the next five years. Thank you all for your help. And I was grant an extension for the action plan, which typically is due December 1st of each year. And we're had a schedule on that. I wasn't thinking I was going to have anything for you until the new year, so, and we do. So I have that attached that we can take a look at, and action plans must be based on your long-range plan, so this kind of adds to what we just did.
I don't think I ever found the action plan. And I'm not sure why, but likewise. Thank you, Dick. We had the items.
You know what? I will see Dorothy and put it up.
Oh, that would be great. We wind up, and this is not a bad thing, inferring the action plan from the bullet points, the second version of the long range.
Yeah, they are, just, and I remember them, but I don't.
Exactly.
I committed them to perfect memory.
Really?
Not yet.
So disappointing. All right, so, okay. And then the budget request that, I think I brought a draft to the table at last meeting, and you were going to take a look at.
I have to, because I do want to talk about it today.
Does it make sense to talk about it now, or?
Well, let's go through your director's report, and then we'll come back to it.
Sounds good. All right, so in general, some things that have been going on. We had volunteer appreciation week, which began the week following Thanksgiving. And thanks to the trustees and the Gift and Donations Fund, we were able to purchase gifts for all 26 of our volunteers, which is a nice, big list. Let me just see. Okay, sorry. Okay, Terry.
Sorry, I'm late.
Just plain good to see you.
Yeah, Terry, I have a question or something here for you.
Okay.
All right. And you got some.
Oh, boy. Oh.
I thought it was coffee.
All right.
Um, that's, I can just tell you that he got help.
Only a minute.
Before I can teach.
Thanks.
Well, yeah, I can't. Thank you, that, Terry.
Thank you.
Thank you, Terry.
It all gets left, which is not library.
Yeah, thanks.
The ladies are going to be like, oh, excuse me, don't eat that. Can I have it?
I have to, no, my friend will have it. Spend that part of day. All right, now. So I am up to here on the director's report.
We accepted the minutes, close that. That's what you missed. The minutes, go ahead.
Acceptance.
Acceptance.
Yes. I blessed them before I left.
All right, good.
All right, so thank you also to the trustees for funding our pizza supper for the staff team-building workshop on Holiday Greens this past Friday night, which was really a wonderful workshop, and that workshop was awful offer to the community on Saturday, and they loved it. It was fully booked, it was, the waitlist was fully booked. Unfortunately, some people didn't come. They canceled late on Friday night, and we couldn't get the next round of waitlisted people notification in time, but they could make it. But it was a really great, great workshop. And it was great for the staff to come together in a way that wasn't so task-oriented, you know, so we really got to know, to find a little bit, which is good because it's the new staff. All right, I'm just finding this. I have not yet received a budget packet from Tracy at Town Hall to know exactly what kind of increase we'll be getting for COLA. And I really couldn't even hazard a guess. I've been hearing on the news so many different things about inflation and what other places are doing, because there are budget differences, but I couldn't hazard a guess, so, it is what it is. I did fund, I attached, I think I've given it to all these four, but I attached the description of all of our funds that I've been kind of adding to as we learn more, as we go along.
Now, that's great. Very handy.
Just to have, you know, as we, as we kind of talk through these things. At our last meeting, we questioned if there were better ways to hold the gift and donations funds and state funds. I did inquire with the MBLC, and I learned that state funds may not become an interest-only spending account. It's supposed to be fully spent. That's their intent with the money. Further, this fund is needed to support staff wages and hopefully staff development in the future, if we ever get the wages, you know, underneath the town fully. The $45,000 remain from last year's made donation, and that's what's left over after you take out the earmarked $30,000 for the local history room. Is truly used by the library. Library does not have sufficient resources in its operating budget, and I feel it would be risky at this juncture to make any of this fund not fully spendable. In particular, considering it's roughly a $20,000 shortfall that we need to cover with our funds each year to meet our 19% to its expenditure requirement. I can offer this up for discussion at this point. I didn't know if you wanted to jump in, or?
Well, I want to, I want to talk about the argument.
Overall?
The overall argument within the budget request, so, however you want to do that, you can do it.
Yeah, I don't know how, do you have a preference?
No.
Okay. All right, okay, go ahead, and then we can kind of go back.
Circles will prove it.
So I'm sorry, just to go back, state aid, just spend it all.
State aid, yes.
Okay.
And we need it because salaries are supplemented by state aid, and I agree we do want to do some staff training, staff development, things like that, and have that kind of, start utilizing that money kind of the way it was intended.
And that's not in an interest account? It says here it can't be, right?
No, so I attached my communications with Mary Rose Quinn, and she went into a lot of detail.
Yeah.
It was great. And that was my understanding anyway, is that it's supposed to go into a general fund with the town. The town gets to keep.
And leftover?
And that's in the statute.
So just spend it all?
Yeah.
Okay.
And we get it.
Perpetually.
Yeah, absolutely.
But because we haven't been spending at all.
Yeah.
We have somewhere $35,000 to $40,000 in that account.
Okay.
Oh my gosh, you found it.
Sorry, I got too sensitive.
Get our favor.
You're welcome.
Love the shirt.
I'll leave you, I'm trying to invest it.
All right, here's the action plan that I've developed so far.
Go ahead.
All right, I printed it, but I don't. There you go. Stay away. Yeah, we can warm up with the, some of the printed pages.
Thank you.
Tillie in here.
So Erin, for the state aid?
Yes.
You're talking about using it for salaries, development, and whatever we need to provide to get to that 16%.
Thank you.
19%.
I just lowered it on you, sorry.
I don't know, so we use a combination of funds to make that extra $20,000, $20,000 that we're short. Terry, I don't mean to cut my back to you.
You're fine, you're fine.
So we use a combination of different funds. Some of the funds are interest-only, some, for instance, the Rambel Fund, I have allocated $3,000 from that this year. Rambel may only be spent on children's materials. All of those children's materials go towards meeting the mark. So that's always going to be something that we spend from, so that doesn't have to come from state aid or gift and donations. Ultimately, if we ever get the shift to be fully funded by the town for the materials requirement, the fund's budget, as well as other budgets, will be able to be spent the way they were first intended. When people either donated or bequeathed the money to us, it wasn't supposed to be operating, it was supposed to be the extras, or it was supposed to be.
Supplements, words.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
But right now, for the state aid, that we're state-funding what we're getting?
Yes.
We're using that for salaries, development, and?
I haven't used it yet. I think I only used a little bit of it last year to pay for materials. I use primarily gift and donations. I did use a little. Gift and donations, and then some of the other funds, like Rambel.
And we can go through the other ones, I just want to get that in line, that that's what we used.
When I see state aid, I think staff. I just, I think staff. I think staff development, I think, we never go to conferences. Nobody here is able to attend conferences, there's no budget. Staff development, just all, to be able to fund those kinds of things on a regular basis would be incredible.
Yes.
How much is involved in a typical attendance at a typical conference? We're talking couple, three, 400 dollars? We're talking thousands?
It depends on the conference and where it is. So they could be in California, they could be on Cape Cod. They could be on Cape Cod, you know?
Sure.
We have to take into account the size of our population, the size of our library, what makes sense as far as where we're going to go. But those are some of the larger conferences, but there are some, you know, sometimes they are in Boston, and that's a great shot.
But coming back to it, I think you've got it at the moment, satisfaction of the materials requirement, 19%, or whatever it's going to be. It was 17 when I came in here a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
Now it's 19, and as the overall MAR increases, as?
Yeah.
The percentage could well move north.
The percentage should not change. So I, Jean was told, and I've been subsequently, I've had this reinforced.
Yes.
By Mary Rose Quinn, that 17% is not, while we might be able to skirt by and still get our state aid funding, I think we don't get as much if we're only doing 17%. So 19% is based on our population size.
Yeah.
Our hours open, it's based on certain, they get that, not all libraries pay 19%. It has to do with, I think I gave you guys a breakdown last time, of what exactly goes into determining which libraries pay which percentage of their.
So we're at to clean?
So we're going to stay at 19%.
Okay, good.
But the hard numbers will shift every year as the budget goes up, even with just cost of living.
Exactly. Exactly.
Exactly.
And so the, the static funds that aren't gaining a lot of interest.
Right.
However, they're financed.
Yeah.
Will be depleted more rapidly than.
They will.
And won't keep up with inflation.
They will.
Over time, I mean, you know, it'll be a while, but it'll happen.
Well, $20,000 a year at this point is pretty rapid, like, within five years, you know?
Well, so, so part of this is a philosophy, right? I mean, this is what I was thinking, by the terms, just to jump ahead into the budget request. So the issue is, if I were the town, and I saw that the library, unlike most other town departments, had a lot of donations, I would want the library to spend them down to some degree before they came to us asking for more money in the budget. And so that's what I want to talk about in terms of our budget request, which is, it seems to be that the, getting up to the MAR took a number of years of steps.
Yeah.
And I would like to propose that we think about what those steps might be for getting the town to buy into funding the materials entirely in their budget, so we're not spending out, and that we're using them for special things, like you've been talking about. And so the question is, do we ask for everything in year one, or do we set up a strategy of how to get there over the course of time? As our funds decrease, can we, you know, kind of make two parallel hills, so to speak? So that's one of the things that I was thinking about in terms of budget requests. And the other is just a kind of functional one, I mean, as years pass, working with Jean, we started out with some positives, achievements, things, looking back on the year gone by, and then challenges, and that dropped out to some degree?
It did, it dropped out. I looked at other budget requests from other libraries, and it's pretty cut and dry, and the town has asked us to be brief.
Oh.
They want us, we're limited to three pages only, can't.
Fine, well, that's good to know.
So I didn't think that was the place, I thought a radio report was a place for that.
Fine.
That the library.
Fine, you know, we didn't have those structures, or we weren't aware of them.
Yeah, I could be wrong.
Sorry, I'm just, you know.
That was the page, that I know.
All right, so then the issue becomes before us, how do we, you know, how do we want to address this, this financial question? And I don't have any answers, I just have.
Well, I think we need a plan. I don't think we can just go ask for everything at once. I think you're right, it should be an annual plan, or a three-year plan, or whatever. But I do think, you know, we know the state aid, the state funding, just, we have to use it all, make sure it's used all.
We don't need to use it all in this year.
Well, whenever the basis is, we need to use it that year so that the town doesn't have all the extra, I mean, why should they get any extra?
That's right. Why should, who get any extra?
The state, whatever's left goes back, not state, I'm sorry, goes back to the town.
No, no, only the interest.
Oh, I thought.
Only the interest.
Oh, I must have misread.
We keep all of our state aid funds.
Well, but it's still the same thing.
And they keep the interest.
We should be, it was meant for the library. So the library should use everything, interest as well as the principal. So I think that's one thing, and just making sure.
Interest is not accrue to us.
Right.
It accrues only to the town, through the placement of the monies in, in the town's general revenue fund.
Right, and that's in statute.
And that's fine, it just, but, but the bottom line is, don't have any ask for that, though.
Exactly.
So the question is, the reason we have some left over is that Jean wanted, and I don't disagree with this, Jean wanted a cushion for a rainy day fund. So I think we want to come up with, what's an appropriate cushion for a rainy day fund? The reason state aid was chosen, I'm assuming, and the reason I would continue keeping a bit of a cushion in state aid is because that can be used to pay salaries.
That can be used without appropriation.
And without appropriation.
Yeah.
So if we lost funding for some reason, if we, if something happened, we could pay staff from state aid, where we can't do that with any other fund.
It's clumsy in terms of accounting, but they can do it.
Yeah.
They can do it.
So what?
You're showing currently then, staying with this metric, around a $33,000 balance in state aid.
Yes. I still am waiting for.
Does that contemplate current $7,000 first tranche this year?
No, I don't have enough, it doesn't include that, I don't have enough data.
It hasn't come in yet?
No.
Perhaps? All right, so we're, we're in the $40,000 range overall, right now.
Yes.
Yeah.
Which is too much. But so, but I think before we start, I think we need a strategy, right?
Right.
What's the goal for a cushion? And then look at, okay, here's this, I'm putting it here, we're not even going to look at that, we're going to look at the rest of this, how do we want to spend that strategically? And how fast? Do we want to spend it in one year, two years, three years? Kind of to your point, what we want to ask for the town. So my only caveat with asking the town for less is, I think we should let them know what we're up against in total, regardless. But then, what we're losing out of gift and donations to supplement the materials is gone forever. So it's not money that's going to get replenished, and it is money that we really do need for other things. So security cameras, if we want to get those, some big-ticket items that the town is really not going to fund, you know, so giving it to them to supplement an operations cost hurts when I think about the other ways that it could be better spent.
But I do believe, so capital expenditures, as the security cameras, the closure mechanism for the handicap door, the blinds in the children's room, I mean, these really can be addressed with James. These are building items.
But they, so, but I don't know where the money would come from, right? So there's a $55,000 building budget, but that's operations, that's our heat, that's our electricity, the water bill.
But doesn't the town have this special fund for, for such things?
One would think.
This is a town building, it's not, you know, so.
Exactly.
So the town has this special fund, what was, what was it being called? I can't remember. Capital?
Capitalization?
Capitalization?
Yeah.
And there was a, and there even is a panel or group of people who are in charge of this?
Yeah.
And so these building issues should be on the list for, for money from the town through that, through, through that fund.
Who's in that group? Do you know?
No.
Who's in that group?
Which group? Capital fund planning or capital planning? I don't know. I don't know, I think it's a website, they can figure it out, it's something else, but.
I can certainly see why the library would want to use its funds or gift funds for, like, the checkout, automated checkout, that's sort of really.
Well, that was our.
Library, library business, but in terms of stuff like security, that's town business.
And there's a certain liability exposure, which can be addressed for the security cameras.
Yeah.
You know, and we have the numbers on hand from, well, they need to be revised, obviously. But I think maybe a conversation with James on these items, they flow in the same direction as replacing the appliances.
They do, but that, those appliances have been working for five years.
It's okay, it's all part of the same, capital improvements, long-term, permanent, nail-toed building kinds of things.
And I don't, you know, in five years or so, we're going to have to be looking at our roof pretty seriously. I think it's going to be a 25-year, and maybe a 30-year roof, I'm not sure which.
Yeah.
So we're facing that, and that's a massive.
And that will not fall to us. That will be part of the capital improvement plan. It's not going to come out of library budget.
Yeah.
I hear you. All right, well, knowing this, I, we can talk a little bit, just the two of us.
Sure.
About how to make the argument clean and neat and forceful.
Right.
The figures, we can, you know, if we need to juggle those, that's like last draft stuff, first draft is the argument, you know, three steps, maybe three year, a three-year plan to get to full funded, as an example, something we could wise be.
And I do agree, yeah, and I do like that approach, and I think it's a fair approach.
And I think it's good to put what we perceive is going to happen before the building, that they're going to have to take care of this, 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 and this in the building. And you're right, just give them a list.
Yeah.
And don't, there you go, so they can do their budgeting, because they've got a budget for that.
Right.
That's really a separate conversation, but you're, you know, we have, that's a whole separate thing, which is a meeting with the people on that committee to discuss, you know, ongoing capital needs of the library's building.
The town in 2018, published in 2019, a capital needs assessment for this building, and you've got a copy of it. Dick gave me a copy as well, but you guys haven't seen it yet, so maybe it's.
I can send that to you.
Yes.
I can have it.
Yeah, it's a tedious read in some respects, but.
I may have, I may have had it once, and I may still have it somewhere.
Well, the exterior painting that was done this year fell within that, those parameters. And the repair of the leaks up in this area here, we're taking care of within the confines of the capital needs assessment.
Somebody must know of the roof.
I think the community room rug as well.
Yeah.
Yes, I hadn't thought of that, but yes.
And so other things on tap are to do the rug in the chunks and other places.
Right, right. Not to mention redoing the reference desk area, so that we can have more elbow room, or shelving, or whatever.
The only other.
But we digress.
The only other comment I would make about the argument, I don't think, certainly if we're trying to leave space, I don't think we want it quite statute in the argument.
Okay.
That's sort of, to me, a little bit of rubbing your nose in in a way.
A little muscle.
There's a way to make the argument without saying this is what a lot of us were, you guys are supposed to do.
Didn't you want the statute in there?
It's wonderful to have it for reference.
Okay.
It's great to know.
If they give you a problem, you can say, okay.
Yeah, no, I put it, I thought you wanted me to put it in there.
In the.
In the budget request.
No, I think, I think Dick's sense of things.
It just, when I read it, I said, oh, that could, if I were.
Guaranteed.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just chilling, like, what's the cleanest, most direct route to the goal?
I'm totally agree, yeah.
Erin, question, you seem to be saying, as we look at what's spendable within some of the gift and donation arena items, you seem to be saying that what shows here is spendable, that's it? That's the entirety of the funds available in these?
Unfortunately, I don't think we can go by this yet, because I haven't received my updates from the town.
Okay, question then is, is it your purpose to show here?
What we're spending, so you can see what's expended, what I have spent under the expended column.
Yeah.
For, yeah, I just don't have any updates on this. So these numbers on the right are town balance. They're there because they were there from the beginning, and I thought I would get more regular, I'm supposed to get them monthly, monthly, I just haven't forgotten that.
Okay. My question to you is, in this first column of numbers, I hope to be more clear. Under the waste management, for example, show $1,000 as a budget item.
Yes.
Is that all
No.
we're ever going to see?
That's interest. So waste management is one of the funds on this list that is an investment fund.
Okay.
And we are only allowed to spend the interest of that.
Which is fine.
Yeah.
So each year annually, you receive an advice from Eileen? Or Lillian, or Diane?
I don't, or I didn't this year. So I don't know how this is supposed to work. But that's where, remember when we met with Diane?
I do.
And we were trying to get to the bottom of how much is actually in the funds? And we sort of found out for that day. I don't get any updates on that. I don't see any of the...
She skated off without providing information.
I don't see any of this information on, I don't get updates. So I don't, I don't have a procedure down for that with them.
We're basically shadow boxing inside.
No, but for some of them, not all of them, for some of them. Gifted donations, I have a pretty good idea of what we've got in there because I know at the end of FY '22, I know exactly how much was in that bank account, because that is not an investment fund.
However, once we spend the G and D funds, they're gone. Done, finished, exhausted.
As well as state aid. Those are the two that once, they're gone, and they're gone. Actually, lowest method, downman tech fund.
Yeah.
Same thing, once it's gone, it's gone.
But the state aid renews every year.
The state aid should renew every year, yeah.
Assuming we meet...
Right, tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Right.
Which we will.
So that, now I'm confused, because I thought you said we don't have to use it in a year.
We don't. But we get more money every year. So...
Okay.
Unlike the other funds in which the nice people died or whatever, and gave us their money, that's not going to happen.
Guaranteed.
On your own, scientists. So that's why we don't have to spend it, okay.
Yeah.
And the town doesn't take that, they just take the interest.
Exactly, yeah. Yeah, it's complex, and it's more complex than most of the libraries from my understanding of other people's budgets and things, and how they have one gift fund, you know, or one endowment, and that's...
They just married everything into one as they received.
There was just one person who died.
But they don't have, they don't have these funds with the interest only. The town covers all the operating costs.
They report as something like 70 or 80 funds.
Maybe that's why they didn't...
And they're all being managed by the town, just the one that I was involved with, which for many years is the only one that.
Okay. And they didn't send me, I did a request for budget spreadsheets from other directors.
Yeah.
They didn't send me one, that's probably why it's good that they didn't, because that's a lot.
So...
But I imagine they spend the, it's the extra.
Well, I'm not sure what it goes for, because that way, you know, our fund that I was involved with, the George Beviti Fund, is exclusively for materials. And so that's what it went for, and other funds may be earmarked for other things. But I do know that there are all these separate little funds. They're all glittering on that Christmas tree. And they report.
Don't it cost them much?
But I've never seen the list to know.
Okay.
Just how many there are, I just recall them in black.
Wow.
So...
Why wouldn't that be a focus, Doctor?
It's not on public, I just never saw it. I mean, I'm sure if you would press it, it would be.
When... In our budget request proposal, we can certainly indicate, in principle, the libraries intend to spend all available interest or principal to offset the materials requirement. It's kind of congruent with the baby steps approach we're thinking about. I have a suggestion in terms of presentation here, alright? I think it would be effective to carve out, state aid is a separate item, clearly distinguished from all the other stuff. Helpful to carve out the Friends, there's $36,000 approximately in the Friends. That is not necessarily, necessarily at the disposal of the director.
Not at all.
Okay?
Yeah.
Therefore, when it shows as an asset item,
Yeah, really.
I think also the NAID could be carved out as a separate blind item, clearly distinguished from gifted donations and other spendable items. And visually, instead of looking at it, $180-some thousand dollars...
Well, this doesn't go to the town.
It's okay.
Okay.
It's okay. But conceptually, and I think it will, it certainly helped me more firmly to comprehend what's going on. You look at 180, you think, wow, but then your minus 80, which we have not expended any of the NAID monies, plan to, you look at the $36,000 of the Friends, that's completely off our sheet, okay? And you look at state aid, which currently stands at, what, $33,000, $34,000? And another seven to be coming in. And if those items are separated visually...
You mean on your report? Because they only go on your report.
Yeah.
I thought, I would think you would want to know about all the money we left.
Yeah, sure. Clearly separated, and then conceptually...
Well, it would help...
We won't be tempted to flush them all together to spend.
It would help organize it, in my brain, coming brand new into this, that, okay, I really have nothing to do with Friends of Library stuff. That's not where we're looking at, really.
Okay.
See what I mean? And then, then the ones that are in trust and just interest, that, and the other things that you were mentioning.
Yeah.
Because conceptually, they're different.
Okay.
They really are different in how you can access them.
Exactly. There are funds you can spend the only interest on, and they're funds where I can, we can drive to zero. And it's good to have those separate.
And it's good to, that way we can come up with a plan that says, okay, we're driving this to zero. So how do you do it, and when do you do it?
So...
I bet it's a great suggestion, Alex.
So I'm not understanding, because they are separate on here.
Maybe it's...
I don't know. I have any in the order that they are. I mean, it could be that...
This is a functioning mathematical spreadsheet that is my entire budget, that involves every book that somebody orders from one of these funds winds up getting auto-capulated into here as we enter all the information. So I can create, I certainly can't revise this for purposes of untrusted meaning, but I can create a new one with the information that you want.
And then have, these are all, because I'm sure you can do it mathematically too, say, just whatever these adds up to in that subset.
Okay.
Uh, that would just be the total number there, and not change this, because you need this.
Can I ask one of you to email me exactly what you want for numbers, and I will go together?
Okay.
I'm happy to. I don't know that I totally grasp it, so I think if you just list out what you want, and then I'll just plug it in. That's not a problem at all.
There are... We're not as flush as we think we are. I mean, if you take, if you take the 185 or 6, whatever shows here, and you minus out the NAID, and you minus out the Friends, and you minus out state aid, there ain't a lot left. And we can commit that, what little bit is left, to help offset the gap in the materials purchase.
Right.
Airmail there, which is now, what, around $8,000 or something? $8,300.
Right. Which we do do. So one of the examples of how we're supplementing, the Friends pay $1,900 a year for our public coffee machine. That's an operating cost, right? That's coming out of our Friends budget. The Friends budget is supposed to be for programming, but we needed a copier. And so that's how we got it. And it's leased, so that's every year that they're spending on, and they have to raise funds so that we can provide a copy of the public. So there's stuff like that, so that really just, that's not an appropriate expenditure to me. It's not good use of their money. They're doing all this hard work trying to raise funds, and it goes to a copier.
To lease a copier?
Yeah.
I mean, really? Why?
A lot of people use it.
Oh, they do. They need it, yeah.
So why is it inappropriate for Friends to not support something like this if the library budget itself can't?
Well, the purpose of the Friends, I will have to look up the precise wording, but it is to provide our programs, our programs and our craft-to-do programs.
Got it.
Among other things.
The crafts, materials for the kids programs. They, you know, there's, there's whole, and these things are costly.
And the Friends filed in 1976 their charter with, as a corporation with the Commonwealth. There's a large, long, detailed paragraph as to the Friends' purpose, and among them are exactly the things you're pointing up here. And you can find it, I didn't bring my fat folder today. Had to walk down, because I can't see. And yeah, exactly the things, but copiers aren't mentioned in 1976.
No.
Imagine that.
Some towns do pay for programming as well, and they're operating on it. So we're already, you know, supplementing a fair amount. Yeah, so, but as far as what's practical, and what do we scare our best shot at getting from the town with the budget request? And I still don't know whether it's a one-shot deal, I think it is, or whether you are able to kind of get a read and revise, or...
My experience is, it's a one-shot deal.
I think so too.
Don't worry, be happy.
But yeah, so we want to tell them how much we need, but break it into maybe three years.
I think so. I just think, having just come from this experience with the MIR, first of all, we need to protect the MIR, because just because they funded it properly one year doesn't mean that it'll happen again the next. So we need to, we need to be viewed, I think, correctly, as people who understand and applaud the town for finally stepping up to that thing. I just didn't know how in the very year after to say, oh, by the way, here's this other big stuff that we need, as opposed to looking at it in step ways, so that... Because we're not going to zero out those funds immediately. So our goal is as those funds, as we deplete those funds, that the town step by step meets what we're losing. And I think that, to me, is a reasonable argument, whether it works or not.
I'm looking at this budget review as step two, as part two of a two-part thing. Last year, they gave us part one, which was the biggest part. And this is part two, to get us in a sustainable financial place.
So they want us to be sustainable.
They do.
They don't want to pay the money right away, you know, in an easy way, but they want, it's what their goal is. So there's a way to say this, and I'll think about it.
Awesome. Awesome. Alright, so... Let me see where we... The action plan. So, this is the action plan that I developed with the help of staff in looking at our writing plan. It's for one year, and basically it's a very, you know, low-level, precise checklist of what, some of the things that we want to make sure that we accomplish. And you'll notice that on some of these, I do have trustees, especially Gold one listed. And Gold three.
Cool.
Yeah. I'm sorry I didn't attach it. If you ever notice, if I left off an attachment, feel free to let me know.
No, it's just a silly scroll up, you know?
No, it's probably me.
Not necessarily. Here's a blank piece of paper. You should be saving that.
Oh, we do. Any blanks, we put back in the pile.
You should. Do it home.
I, yeah, I actually have a question about this insurance machine that they rent. Can't we figure out a way to buy from them, or is that not the way to go?
I don't know.
I do, and lease is normal in that business. I insured a couple of major office supply back in the day. I'm out of the business 10 years, however, ask Wayne, he knows.
I think most people do rent them, if it's a business. Simply because they, you know, now you have somebody servicing it too.
Right.
It's not, you know, it's not a separate thing.
If they don't charge you every time they come out, but leave that aside. But yeah, you do buy the service plan. So, anyway, lease is common. It does seem kind of rugged. Was it around $1,900 a year, I think?
Yeah. And then about $100 and something for toner replacement.
Yeah.
For each color.
I wonder how much... Doesn't matter.
And if that's, is that what they do at Town Hall? They lease?
Probably.
I don't think they'd pay too much for it.
You can ask Leslie or Tracy. And then that kind of tips you over to the wisdom of coordinating. Lees is among police department, DPW, library, town hall. Bundle it up, go with a single vendor, I don't know.
Yeah, this copy is relatively new.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, a couple of years.
I think it was just before COVID, I think it was like 2019. But I can't remember how... I wasn't in the conversation with Jean and Friends to know what exactly happened there, how they decided to take it on in the first place.
Yeah.
I just don't know.
I don't know. Maybe among other things, conversation with Tracy on that particular item.
Right. I don't think she'd have gone to them, I don't think she would ask the Friends if she couldn't get it elsewhere. If she could, if she could get it from the town, I don't think, you know what I mean? Like, she must have exhausted that.
Yeah, but I would think things change too. I mean, it makes sense, it's the town's property.
Yeah.
It's, and they'd get a better rate if they had, if they're doing everybody's.
Yeah, one looks like.
I don't know. I would think that that would make sense.
I mean, I understand that they would see it as a need, that it's the Friends, because obviously it's a need. But why it becomes their burden doesn't make sense to me.
It doesn't make sense.
And the flip side of it is, some are, all of that lease payment counts toward our materials.
It does.
So we move it to a town expenditure, and then we're still left with a materials cap that we have to deal with.
It's also a scanner, and people can put in their USB at their thumb drive and take home documents if they scan. And so that means it counts as materials, because a pageant can walk away with something. So, yeah.
Wheels within wheels, Terry.
We were quite explaining that one to me this past financial plan season.
Couple crazy thoughts here.
I mean, somebody could walk out with a book they didn't check out, but it doesn't count though.
Oh, yeah, if we bought it, it counts. Yeah. If we bought the book, it counts towards materials. Regardless, it just has to do with our...
It'd be pain for the paper anyway. You can only, what is it, 10 cents a page, or whatever it's up to?
Yeah.
So it'd probably be cheaper for them to buy the book.
Oh, you mean copy the book?
And copyright and...
Right, right.
All that stuff, yeah. All that stuff, yeah.
Sorry, I misunderstood. So I don't know, do you know if the action plan needs to get approved by the board, or is this just a director level?
I've never done it, I have no experience.
Because it's an annual thing, so I'm guessing it's just me.
I think so, because I've never seen one before, so...
Oh, okay.
So I assume, at least I don't, let me put it more accurately, I don't remember ever seeing one before.
All right, so then, I mean, this is the template that the MBLC has given me to work with.
Okay.
And so it follows that, this grid, and then I added each of our goals from the long-range plan, and then this is, these are the action items that were on the original, or many of them are, original long-range plan that I was talking to about breaking up.
Right.
And then I put it out to staff to take a look at the long-range plan and let me know if they had anything they wanted to add. And they did. Did.
So let's hedge our bets and move it, move it to trustee approval, and then you can so note it in your correspondence-
Perfect.
-and in your mind outside.
That's perfect.
Because there's nothing here that anybody would object to. Are you cool with that, Dick?
So shall I, shall I move that we accept the action plan as presented?
Second, whatever, third.
Unanimous, supposedly. Excellent. Good thought there.
Thank you. All right, so that is the action plan. I don't have an update on the union, so it must be kind of a slow vote, I think. As soon as I know something, I won't care. Um, let's see.
Yeah.
For budget summary, funds updates, I did notice a discrepancy in the funds allocated towards materials budget, it wasn't a common, but it's been corrected, and it had to do with one of my formulas. So because it's a brand-new spreadsheet, or series of spreadsheets that all talk to each other, there's going to be some tweaking, we're going to need to do it in a little way. So as budgets change, that's where I'm, it kind of shows me where something's broken, you know? So hopefully, after this first year, I'm thinking of it like first year teaching type of thing, where you're developing all your materials, and then next year you get to use them.
Yeah.
Thinking at it that way. So we're at 44% of the year passed, um, and, let's see, 37% of the total library budget spent, so we're a little bit under, which is not bad. A little bit over for funds, but overall, I think things are coming along okay. And again, these are going to change, like the municipal parts, I still need to get my breakdowns, my monthly breakdowns from them, so that I can reconcile this. So that's another area that kind of lets me do and checks and balances when I'm close, yeah. Okay, so, staffing, the personnel policy revision request, we have it on hold until we have a better idea of what staffs and they're asking for, because I don't think it makes sense for us all to be spinning our rules and just...
You know, it's going to ramify into our wages and wage and salaries request, and the sobering notes, okay. If the COLA is only 3%, that's an $8100 increase in the wage and salaries budget. If it moves to 5%, it'll be a $13,500 increase, and that comes into the whole approach on Or if it respects the recently promulgated 7.1%, it's going to increase by $19,200.
I feel the same, saying it won't, it won't go to 7.
It won't go, it won't go to 7. And the sad thing is, even at 5, it's a reduction in compensation for staff.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Back to state aid.
So hiring is turning up, I'm on a thread right now with all of the directors, and hiring is turning into a problem for a lot of libraries, in large part, because librarians and library workers are so poorly paid as a, not a sector, but...
Cohort.
Yeah. And it hasn't really been, there's been no kind of reconciliation of those wages across the board, and it may happen now because people can't hire people, because they can go elsewhere.
And are other libraries facing union?
So Hamilton just unionized, and so, you know, Drift and Grabs, yeah.
So it's starting to...
Yep.
The unions are coming back from many years of not being...
Is it the Teamsters in Hamilton also?
Oh, I don't know. Yeah, I don't know.
How about Amesbury?
I don't know that feedback.
I suspect they're...
I know, what?
I suspect they're Teamsters.
I know the DPW is Teamsters, or I think it is.
That makes sense.
I don't know why I think that.
Well, it's interesting, I mean, you know, this problem, we have this inelastic 19% against an elastic budget.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
And so it never gets looked at. The assumption is that if you're, you know, we're essentially paying people less than they got the year before and being charged more for the privilege.
Yeah. Yeah. So anyway, but we really can't make any progress on that, we as director or we as board, until that whole thing gets settled and we know where everything's landed. For library building and grounds, I am working on building a building book for the NTL, and I'm going to be enlisting Dorothy's help as well. It's going to be a massive book, and it's not going to be so much a hard copy book as it is something that's going to live online and have all of our information in it.
Oh, great. I don't run a library for dummies.
Or trustees. Same thing, right?
Well, maybe you are.
But it'll be like a master document, but...
That's a really good idea.
It needs to happen, it's going to take forever, but, you know, it'll never happen if you don't start it, so we're going to start it. I have a good kind of outline that I saw at a meeting I was in, the small directors of the MLS, that I'm using as my base. And, but they, they threw it out there conceptually, but I don't think any library has necessarily done it yet that you can totally go by. So they had the chapters, and there are libraries that do have certain chapters in it, say, that they put together, but there's no master. So I thought it'd be really great to have a master document for people going forward, because I have all these questions, you know, that I can't get answers to.
It should be, it should be a digital document, because it's going to change, going to change by the minute.
Exactly.
Got a new fire extinguisher.
There you go.
Whatever.
Right.
That gets done regularly.
Great, that's a great, that's a really good thing to do.
The dumpster, we're having dumpster issues again. Heather clearly reported to me that it had been locked unchained and unlocked by the DPW when Little League was going on, because it was too hard to keep going back and forth and back and forth, locking it, unlocking it. So it's locked to get, it should be locked again, and I guess it was a real big mess out there, just somebody, don't know who started using it as a dumpster ground.
Hopefully, it didn't have rats.
Ugh, I don't know. I have seen, I saw a rat outside here on the grounds once.
You did?
An actual rat.
Is it moving, or just...
Oh, no, it was walking along.
I'm a good job.
Pacing the joint.
Yeah, yeah. Winking at it.
It was doing storybook. What story did they have out there?
He gave up because he couldn't see.
Is the man...
That's exactly my stuff, too.
Yeah.
The new lock is, continues to be problematic. I haven't gotten to do any more digging on this, but the way, the way your front door used to lock, and the way our janitor's closet locks, in fact, is that you would unlock it when it's deep, come in and it would re-lock. It wouldn't, it wouldn't ever actually stay unlocked. The way it works now is that you have to manually re-lock it.
From the outside.
From the outside, not just the inside. So what would happen before, when we would come in, unlock the door, come in, it closes behind us, it's still locked, so patrons aren't coming in until we open, nobody else is coming in. This new lock, I came in last week and front door's completely unlocked, all lights are on, the lights are on upstairs into the electrical room, and I'm like, tiptoeing around, like, okay, it's here, because I get here, and I saw the lights run upstairs, so I texted James, and I'm like, were you guys here? And he got right back to me, he's like, oh, yeah, the guys are there, sorry, they probably forgot to, you know. So it's usually something like, it's not, hasn't been anything bad yet. It's DPW, it's somebody using community room who didn't figure it out right, because it's complicated, or, I don't think it's been Heather ever, but maybe, who knows? And sometimes us staff, so if staff comes in and they forget, it's really easy to do because the alarm starts going off, or, you know what I mean? You're focused on just getting in. It's just when we leave and we're locking up, and we're focused on locking it from the inside like we've always done, you have to re-lock it from the outside, and it's a weird, it's just not taking. So if any way...
Can you put a sign up? Just say, don't forget to lock it from the outside, is that going on?
It's not working. It's not, because it's across the board. It's just, it's not intuitive and it doesn't...
Do you know if it's a bug or a feature?
Yeah, that's a good question.
It might be.
Well, what I'm wondering is, much like the janitor's closet, you unlock it and, you know, go in and get yourself, close it, it's locked, you know what I mean? It's, you didn't unlock it permanently.
I wonder if, so the janitors, when you go in, what if it closed behind you?
Yeah, I wonder that, too.
Wouldn't do that, it wouldn't stay locked?
No, so similarly to the front doors, when, before we changed the door, we would unlock it, it would re-lock, come in, you could always get out.
Okay. Because I was wondering if it was just a safety feature.
No, because you can always go out, it's just coming...
It's an unsafety feature.
And what it amounts to is that at least the building is insecure, unsecured?
Open.
Yeah.
Yeah, right, so now it's, it's creating a problem that was designed to stop.
Right. So what I want to find out-
It's just a universal problem.
-from somebody, whether it's James or the lock place, is can it easily, and not expensively, be made to always be locked from the outside unless we, you know, configure the press bar from the inside to be unlocked?
Yeah.
And then it doesn't matter, that kind of nullifies it.
Yeah.
So I want to look into that, and I, if it costs anybody, I won't even talk about cost until I have, you know, an idea if it's possible, or it might not be. But it is an issue, so I wanted to mention.
It's an issue.
Oh, it just, it happens all the time, though. We have, I don't know what happens, it's like a children's book library at night, where like the books come off and start dancing or something, some weird stuff happens here at night.
Excuse me.
So, let's see, I finished the new alarm codes, and I just need to write up a notification, my glasses keep falling, a notification for the various people from town that need new codes to notify them, and I want to get their response back that they received my notification, they know this is happening, before I actually send it over to the alarm company. The alarm company told me it's only going to take them 15 minutes to implement all of the new codes for everybody. And we've created a new documentation Dorothy has for the key kits for the community room, so they're all ready to go with their new codes, which will only work on the community room alarm, not on the alarm to get into the main building, which is how it is at the moment.
Good.
So that'll be an improvement. We're still trying to clean up, it's a very slow process, because there's so much else to do to look into those boxes. Let's see, and then Nikki had feedback from multiple people. If you're familiar with lockdown, into children's, there are huge windows at the end, and the sun is very, very, very bright, shining, the parents and caregivers and kids, to the point where it causes them to, you know, relocate or leave, which we don't want. So we're thinking about some kind of, having blinds, you know, something that we want to look into, is a giant set of windows, so it'll probably be costly. That's something that would come from gift and donations, if, or the K-Brown Fund, depending, because her, that fund is for building class.
Well, you might as well start. Vendors.
Right.
Some years ago, the Fellowship Hall in Old South needed to be refitted with blinds, Old South Church, and they went to Port Paint and Paper there at the foot of Warren Street Corner, Merrimack. Ownership has changed at that place, but they're local, at least.
It's monthly, they're also very expensive.
Yes, but this would give you some idea-
Yeah.
-if they came in and began to-
Yeah.
-measure and estimate and all.
Yeah, I think there's a discount blinds or something in new reports somewhere, maybe at Salisbury.
But is that the quality that we want here, looking long-term?
It depends. So Jean just got, she got blinds for the director's office. I don't, I haven't found any of the paperwork on that to know where she got them or how much it was, or what fund it came from, actually.
Another mystery.
Trustee fund, do they?
I don't know.
I haven't found anything. Anyway, I'll see what I can dig up, because those are nice, but I'm sure she, I'm sure she didn't overspend on them.
Yeah. You might as well get going.
Well, yeah, it's a matter of time, you know.
Of course. No, seriously, we understand that.
That's the only thing holding me back.
But don't feel that our approval or disapproval is holding you back.
Oh, of course, no.
Go ahead.
I do want to let you know about the issue.
Sure.
And that I'm looking into something that will come out of the gift and donation fund, if we are able to fix it.
I guess we can't spend those on materials, then, huh?
Right.
Can't spend the same dollar twice.
Right.
Back to state aid.
All right, so that's that. I have no updates on the following there, which is the water bill, don't know what's going on.
And it shut us off, so it's got to be okay.
Right, but as far as the bill, yeah, all of that.
I recall intimately.
Did you submit a date when they get back to you, or?
Nope.
Okay. You guys were all copied on my email to, to James relative to the, to the bill, and there's been no response, because obviously it had been copied on the response as well. So, there it hangs.
I'm just thinking that, you know, I mean, if anything, they should be billing the association, the baseball association for it.
Right. So when I get, my prompt that I'm planning to use is when I get the bill, which, it'll be quarterly, so that, you know, should be coming along...
Due in February, in January, been here a little...
Yeah, so there's...
And that'll be my prompt, right?
Yeah.
Okay, upcoming programs and events, I attached the December-January calendars, but we've got going on a second annual mitten drive. So Catherine is the one that started this going last year for Patton Gill House, and it was hugely successful. We had three giant boxes that we wound up donating to Patton Gill, including, somebody even donated it to Charles Power Cath, brand new. Just amazing turnout, so we've already got one giant box filled already.
Oh, that's wonderful.
Yeah, it's pretty awesome. And so I, I think I mentioned it to the front, one of the things that a lot of people donate are the cute and the pretty things for kids and, well, women, which is awesome, but largely men who are in... But largely men who are in need get left out because their gloves or hats or whatever aren't as captivating. So it's just one thing to think of that. I always mention it, whenever I mention mitten drives or anything like that, I always mention, don't forget the gentleman who might need some stuff too.
I went to an event with my husband, Service Master. These two brothers own the company in near Wakefield. Anyway, they have this massive building and they do a summer barbecue thing for all the insurance companies. You know, maybe you know that company. And then they have little raffles and stuff like that. But then this one was the pajama party. And they had some prizes there. If you wore pajamas, you'd get two tickets instead of one toward the raffles and the soup. And Wayne, I shouldn't say this, we're being recorded. Wayne has a Star Trek bathrobe, so he wore it over his clothes, right? But this, we went one other time. And this year, pretty much everybody had pajamas on. And they had collected over a period of time, not just that one, like, over a thousand pairs of pajamas.
Wow.
Which to me was a snowman.
It's pretty awesome.
So you brought a pair and wore a pair? Is that what you, is that how it worked?
No, no, you bring them to donate.
Okay.
And they're children, adult, whatever. And then you yourself wear yours. Or whatever you say is your own pajamas. Within reason, no. And then they had some pizza and some other foods there. And a program about a few things. The daughter of one employee sang. But it was a very positive of the experience. And who would think so? Because it was insurance company workers sitting at their tables with their compatriots, not mingling as an entire crowd, until everybody starts laughing about something and then it kept going. But it might be nice to do something in an event like that here.
I feel like we did, because remember Lori wrote that book, My Pajamas or something like that? I feel like she did do a pajama drive every year. She is a former children's librarian.
Yes, and there was a picture of me on in my bathroom.
That's right. What was that? I remember that.
I do too. I was willing. It was real, it was the first year that I was in Tennessee.
That might have been Teddy Bear Sleepover? Was it Teddy Bear Sleepover? I don't remember.
You might have been helping out. That's a good, yeah, that's a good idea though. I mean, just in creating that kind of buzz and getting people in here and making a community.
Yes, yes.
Because we're always trying to do community things.
Well, libraries have had pajama, teen pajama parties and stuff, you know?
Right.
Like, people sitting over at the National History Museum, you know? So libraries have done this in the past. I don't know, with COVID, they probably all went away.
Right, that's, we did, we did do the Teddy Bear Sleepover. And that's about, because that was during COVID.
Yeah, right. They don't even have to be separated apart, the teddy bears.
Teddy bears don't have food.
I think seems like that, our community building.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
And it's nice, you know, for the patrons, I think, to see, you know, Catherine wrapped up the box and wrapping paper and everything, you know what I mean? And they see it getting more and more full. And we add another box, you know, it is, it's really good. And of course, Pat and Gil is very, very happy to be the receivers. So it really goes a long way to help, help some people. So that's that. The local escape room had its first premiere the Saturday after Thanksgiving. It was very well received and now it's freezing cold and we can't do it until spring, but we got one in.
I remember you typed this, it said, cold weather is near.
Yeah, I know, it was last week.
Things date quickly.
Yeah, no kidding.
So that's something that'll start up in the spring?
Yeah, we're going to start some marketing teasers and firmos and stuff for probably February to start kind of generating interest and.
I have a thought. And this is off subject, so forgive me, but seeing Katie's name here and celebrating the work she's done, I'm reminded that both Katie and Emma, who've just been wonderful here, are going to age out of their parents' health plans at age 26. And they've got to be getting close. I mean, they've been here two, three years and.
I think we have another year.
Yeah, but planning, budgeting. It's something, obviously, you're mindful of. Maybe it needs to weave its way into budget thoughts. These are unbenefited positions. And the benefit cost to the town for each benefited employee is calculated at $15,000 a year. And that feels about right, unfortunately, based on, you know, I don't know.
We used to say around $20,000, that was back when I was working.
Diane, let me know the breakdown, it's about 15.
Yeah.
Sounds great.
Family plan, single, little less, but still, we need to be mindful of it. If we wish to retain, you know, attracted, yes, motivated, definitely. Proof is daily, retain.
One of the things other libraries do for part-time staff is give them prorated benefits. They at least have an option, might be more costly option to get insurance, but I, you know, prorated, they get personal days, but they don't get sick time. You know, but they get three days. So there are some things that could be done. But again, I think we just have to kind of hold tight until the dust settles from whatever happens with the union. But yes, the one good thing is that I got those wages up to $19 an hour, so.
State aid.
Right. Right.
So we need, as we approach for wage and salary, whatever COLA is, we need to incorporate.
Right.
Those modest increases we voted.
Right, so, right, so the town funds them at $16.15 an hour, which we're not going to hire anybody, nobody's going to work for us.
For McDonald's, it's a pain, it's 19.
Exactly. Yeah, it's just not going to happen, which is why I raised it.
Correct.
But we, that's the other part of the budget request, right? Is that down the road, depending what happens, we need to get salaries up to an appropriate level.
I think insofar as budget request is concerned, we ignore the union thing.
Oh, yeah.
It's going to take its own.
We can't now.
Track, there's nothing we can do about it. So we do know, we increased for the associates and we need to reach for that full fund, complete town funding.
Oh, in this year's budget request?
In May 524 budget request, yes.
I know, we are not getting any more money for salaries, other than COLA. There will be no increase.
So.
Here's a question. What about the other part-time employees in the town?
I don't know.
Aren't very many.
Yeah, I don't know who's part-time, who's full-time. Like, I don't know who's, I don't have that information. So when you look at information, you can see wage ranges and general position titles, but you don't know exactly. It's just not detailed.
So we don't know where our part-time employees, where they fit in, in that general?
For their wage range? Yes, they're just below middle now at 19.
Okay.
Little for libraries.
No middle for this town.
Yeah, that's why I was asking, because they can't do something for one and not the other.
Right.
So is this across the board, but it doesn't sound, well, it might be across the board, but it doesn't impact too many people?
Well, you can fall anywhere in that range, because there's no union. You could have different people of different areas of the range.
So all the other part-time employees could be higher in the range?
Absolutely.
Than the librarians?
Right, and I have no way of knowing. I don't think they're lower because $16.15 is.
No, they absolutely are.
Is that, is below it?
No, but I'm just wondering if that is one of the points we make, is that you have to be equitable to part-time employees. If they're in the same salary range, you need to be equitable. And after a certain amount of years, they have to be at a certain point.
Well, they, they don't now because there's no union.
Right, but I think just in general, I think that is something to say. That's not right, just doing that to librarians.
Right, if, right, if that's, I wouldn't be able to say that for sure.
Because you don't really know, but you can ask, what we can ask the question as far as when you're asking for budgets to say, we want them equitable with other part-time employees. And if it's based on how long you've been working, that's fine, that's a range. Because every year, they should be getting an increase.
They don't.
So it's just whatever they figure they want.
You stay at the bottom unless somebody goes to bat for you.
Okay.
And there's a COLA, but you're still at the bottom.
Right, so that's really, I guess, the argument that we have when we're going against the budget to say, if you have other part-time employees, where are they on the range? I mean, they should be able to answer questions. They should be able to ask questions. It's not that you're trying to be unreasonable, it's just, you know, we've got to understand.
The big picture.
And if you're not paying them like the other part-time employees, because there aren't that many, why not?
Right.
I mean, if you look at education and everything else, which is supposed to go into how much you're being paid.
Right.
So I guess that's, you know, once you get to that point. But there's definitely arguments where they can't just say, I'm not going to tell you. You know, I mean, that's unreasonable. I don't think the town really wants to be unreasonable.
I also think it's.
We're not talking about a lot of people, we're talking to people.
Right.
It's scary to think that they could be without health insurance too.
Yeah, I think that's scary.
For sure, sure it is.
Several times now, I said that today.
No way that they would stay. They're going to need to find something that's going to give them health insurance, so.
And does Massachusetts have a health insurance?
That they do. But I think there's rules behind it, I just don't know what they are.
Okay.
But that's a good point.
You're talking about the connector? Dallas Connector?
Do you mean state employees?
No, just in general, Massachusetts.
Mass Health, is it?
Mass Health, yeah, you can buy health insurance and, I don't know how much it is or what it does or whatever, but that's another discussion.
As far as this year's budget request though, and since I have been pretty much full, we are not getting any increase for salaries aside from COLA. This is, so they're not going to, because they just gave us a ton of money for salaries. It's not going to happen. So do we want to reference it? Because it is a concern that they should be aware of, even though we're not asking for anything this year?
Should be part of the three-year plan.
Right.
You know, that this is where we would like them to be, in three years at least.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That it's equitable with other part-time employees.
Right.
Unless they're so far below, then we don't want it equitable.
It's tough, you know, with the union stuff, because they don't know how much work we should be putting into this, depending, because we have no idea. This may get sorted, and I don't know how. It may become a non.
It probably will. I mean, if they get, become unionized, then it will be.
Well, I think Erin, in your initial conversation or two with Tracy, she was quite firm that if negotiations, union involvement and so forth results in enhanced compensation for employees, our wage and salaries budget is not going to be increased. And therefore, we're going to have to shed employees.
Well, it doesn't have to be increased, yeah.
Well, I think they have, you know, there's, at that point, if that comes up, then you go to the unions and say, okay, we're going to have to lay off employees now.
Right.
Go back to bat with them.
No one.
Yeah, it's, that's what a union is for. They're the ones that are going to be fighting the battles, they're the ones that, and they don't want people, they certainly will not like people being fired. So I think the town can say whatever they want.
Well, it's July 1.
Right.
But then that means you don't have a role. Right, so they're not employed, so they're fired, basically. And, you know, at that point, the union is not going to like that either.
Yeah.
And it's, you know, that's, they're the ones that are going to be doing battling. They're the only ones with any kind of power. But I think it's kind of short-sighted of the town saying, yeah, well, we're never going to do that, well, okay.
I wouldn't.
I can't imagine.
I don't think, I don't think that's. I don't think that's right. I think that right now, the town is saying, we gave you a big salary increase last year.
And that's reasonable.
So it's not on the books for this coming year. We're trying to make the case, therefore, we get that and we appreciate that. But now, here are the other things we're facing financially.
And I think you do it that way.
Yeah, I think that's the way to do it.
Yeah, I can't imagine.
We're partly there.
Totally right.
Guys, I'm going to have to leave in a minute, so.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Oh, no, I can wrap up quick.
The voice of sobriety will go with you.
So.
Don't rush.
Liz is starting to put together details to Strack Seed Library, like the whole works this spring. And she's hoping to work with the friends in the Newbury Garden Club, kick things off for the plant sale. We have several reads with therapy dog sessions happening tomorrow that Nikki has been carrying. Her musical storytimes are hit. And she even brought in her cello, she plays in a orchestra. And she let the kids try her cello and video things, yeah.
Can I say one thing about the garden club?
Yes.
I went to the Christmas opening at Cushing House. The Newbury Garden Club did the flowers there, they were phenomenal. Really stunning. I think it might be nice if we could get them to do something here.
Yeah, it would.
I was stunned by it.
Wow.
Who had been taking care of the garden here?
So it was the Newbury Garden Club, but they can no longer. It's Carol. Oh, gosh, I can't even have it. I talked with the friends about possibly helping with that, so something's in the works there.
Sure.
Let's see, Dorothy brought back gentle yoga with Roots to Wings, with Beth, who used to teach over there, Beth Williams, which is awesome. And she got back tech help with a new person from the Newbury Core Adult Education Center. He's going to be here once a month for the next three months. And then we'll see if we're able to, if we can do it funds-wise, get him here more frequently. So that's a big need for the community that they keep asking for. As of, let me see, the friends meeting that we had, this week or last week? There are already up to $700 in donations for the Forest of Trees fundraiser, which are the little green evergreens that people donate to, which is fantastic. And let's see, the local history room project? Oh, yeah, and I wanted to ask you all to start thinking about the local history room project, how we want to use $30,000, and what's the first action step that we want to take towards starting to get this accomplished? And the reason I bring it up is too bold, because somebody that Dorothy knows in the Innsbury Library, she's retired, she is whipping into shape the local history room in Southampton and Hampshire right now. And she's part-time there and she would love to do it for us as well, if we're interested.
Yeah, play her on.
Well, the question is, she needs a directive. And I don't think we have a clear directive yet to provide her with. So that, I think, is maybe what we need to come up with.
Might be nice to see how she did it in the other library too.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Yep, oh, yeah. Well, I would imagine we'd put out a call for. Yeah, oh, yeah, well, I would imagine we'd put out a call for applicants, you know, for a temporary contract job or something like that, I don't actually know.
Probably the best way to do it.
What the first step would be, but we would need a description of goals, job description, and what our expectations are to be, so I want to put that in the backs of all of your minds, as if there's not enough, there already from all this paperwork. So that's about it.
I had one other thing I wanted to say, I wanted to, I think we need to have a meeting about meeting room policies, a subcommittee, I was going to suggest the two of us, and ours, to get together, I have, I sent a list of about three assorted meeting room policies from around the internet, and we can look at the things that they say, and what's important to them, and determine if any of those are things that we need to have in mind. Because ours is pretty free of, most of the regulations really have to do with how you get the room, what your requirements are, once you book the room, but there isn't a lot of data yet in the meeting room policy about what we do allow, what we don't allow, and I think we need to be a little careful about this with the state aid.
Yeah.
So I don't know, you know, my life's a little crazy right now, but we'll get to it.
When it settles, if it ever settles, sing out, and we can sit and work on that.
Yeah.
I'm visually handicapped at the moment, and it's going to be worse after tomorrow, so.
Okay, yeah, and that one's coming up, but I would think soon.
Pass it to the new manager.
Yeah, I keep thinking any day I'm going to get it, but hi.
Your payrolls will need to be come or signed tomorrow.
Yeah, I don't have, Liz is out today, and I don't have, so I don't have hers.
Point being, I'm in surgery tomorrow morning.
Oh, my goodness.
Well, as I just said, it's going to get worse, and, so. Talk to Beth or Terry.
I think it's only Terry that is, as of now, able to sign.
Terry checked and learned that anybody can sign.
Really?
Yeah.
Oh, great.
Any of our trustees.
Okay.
Can sign.
Kind of sign the payrolls.
Yes, okay, can one of you sign tomorrow for payroll in the morning?
For sure.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
So we need to have a formal close for the.
Oh, supposedly close the meeting.